I'm gonna call them.
Meeting to order and welcome to the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Meeting of the Shrewsbury Board of Selectment. As a preliminary matter, I am John Sammy, Chair. Please permit me to confirm that all members in persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John LeBeau.
Present.
Beth Cassavan.
Present.
Morris DiPaolo.
Present.
Teresa Flynn.
Present.
Staff, when I call your names, please respond in the affirmative. Kevin Mizikar.
Present.
Kristen Los.
Present.
Taylor Galusha.
Present.
Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectment is being conducted remotely consistent with Senate Bill twenty-four seventy-five, signed into law by Governor Baker on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section eighteen. This meeting of the Board of Selectment will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Board of Selectment is convening by Google Meet as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please be sure to press star six to mute your device. This meeting will not feature public comment. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. And the preliminary matters, first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a movement second and a roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Sammy, aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to approve minutes of December seventh, twenty twenty-one, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moving in second and roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mrs. Mr. DiPaolo.
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Sammy, aye, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports, any announcements, colleagues. I have two quick ones. First one's from the Town Clerk's Office. The dog licensing period is now open for twenty twenty-two as of this year. Residents can now license their dog online. The twenty twenty-two licensing period will close on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Please visit shrewsburymass.gov backslash dog license for more information. And also one other quick item, an update on the bill reuse process. Again, we want to appreciate all the feedback that we received from town residents at the public hearing that was held on December seventh and all the correspondence that we've since received by email and regular mail, some of which we'll note tonight in correspondence. So we appreciate all your thoughtful feedback. We've incorporated this feedback in our subsequent conversations with the proponent, the developer, and continue our discussions. We expect to have an update as soon as possible, possibly as soon as next meeting. Mr. DiPaolo.
I'm sorry, Ms. Jimin. If you don't have any other announcements, I just like to give a real quick update on the police station. We got a little bit discombobulated here for a minute. Is it, are you finished? I can wait.
I'm finished, just too quick. That was two quick announcements. Go ahead.
Um, okay. Well, the the construction remains on progress. The structural steel for the police station is virtually complete except for some detailing. The structural masonry is almost complete. And to date, twenty percent of the contract is completed, which obviously means twenty percent of the job is basically complete. In December, the the labor force booked eighteen hundred worker hours. So that it was a busy, a busy month because the weather was pretty good. Looking forward, the contractor is looking within the coming week, depending on on weather to start porting the second floor and have that completed within a week's time of that beginning. And then they will move to slab on grade, closing in the building so that they can do that with heat. The roof crusses are expected to be starting to be installed by the end of the month. And the exterior stud and siding to accept the brick veneer is going to be coming forward in the next couple of weeks. So we remain on budget. We remain on time. And at this point, things are looking good.
Great, thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. Any anything else from colleagues?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. LeBeau.
Mr. Chairman, I have a brief announcement. I'd like to take this opportunity to inform the voters that I do not intend to seek reelection at the annual town election in May. I'd like to thank them for their support and I'd like to get back to work now.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau. If I may, just make a quick comment about that and open the floor as well, knowing you want to get back to work. But I also want to recognize you for all of your public service. Really, your thoughtfulness, intelligence, and your dedication. One of the most precious commodities we could give is of our time. And you've done that for a long period of time and you've made our community a much better place to live. So I just wanted to recognize you there. There'll be plenty of time for that, but I didn't want to go forward without any making some brief comments about all the great things you've done for our community.
Thank you.
Mr. Jimmy, could I just jump in? I have to jump in for a second. Ms. LeBeau, I obviously we'll have time to talk further about your tenure, but I I'm going to miss working with you and I thank you for all of your service. It really has been a pleasure on working with you all these years. And you know, it it's it's kind of an interesting pivot point for me here because you and Mary Thompson and a couple of other people are the only ones who have been in town hall either almost as long or longer than than I have. So you know, we we've had a whole generation of people that we worked with who have now transferred and I got to kind of miss the stability of having somebody next to me saying, hey, didn't we do something like that about three years ago? But anyways, I want to thank you and congratulate you for your service. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else? As Mr. DiPaolo mentioned, we'll have many opportunities to recognize Mr. LeBeau. So again, thank you for all of your service. But he's still available for any history. Mr. LeBeau has, no one can even touch him on that. He knows everything about this town. So going forward, next item on the on the agenda on the preliminaries, the town manager's report. And actually, after that, as well as under special reports, COVID nineteen updates. I'll hand both of those items over to Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of brief updates in the town manager's report before I get into the COVID numbers, which I'm not very excited to share with you. So just wanted to recognize two staff members for their recent accomplishments. Kevin Esposito recently completed tree warden training and is now has a certificate in that. Alex Martinez has recently completed the certificate program and municipal finance with Suffolk University. And we had several staff members, including Nick Hawes in the town manager's office, Joe Milos in the fire department. And Sue Puckett recently complete the leadership development program with Leadership Management Institute that so many of our employees take. So I just wanted to recognize those employees for their recent accomplishments and continuing education to benefit the organization. A couple of other final notes. The town is in receipt of and thoroughly reviewing the American Rescue Plan Act final rule from the United States Treasury. In brief, it's very good news. Some additional flexibility has been provided through the Rescue Plan Act final rule, even over the interim role that was put in place. We'll continue to analyze that. It's a quite large document, four hundred and thirty-some pages. Some good summary documents produced by the U.S. Treasury and we'll be prepared to work with the board and advise you on next steps with the expenditure of the Rescue Plan Act funds. And finally, earlier this week, we received notice from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources that remnants of an invasive species, the spotted lanternfly, was found in town and that their teams will begin conducting further analysis and review in the in the town center, not the historic center, but the the center of town at the intersection of one forty and Route twenty. So I will keep you updated on that, those intensive efforts that will come. We just wanted to make you aware that we did receive that notice today. So we'll also be receiving educational materials from the state to provide to residents to further help with identification of any further spread of that insect. So from there, I'll move on and share my screen and get into the COVID. All right. So continue to track the overall case totals in town. We have five thousand eight hundred nine positive cases, an increase of one thousand five hundred and thirty cases since we last reported on December twenty-first, at your last regular meeting. We've had eight hundred and four cases in the last seven days. Board members provide context on the eight hundred and four cases, although it's, you know, obviously well-known this Omicron variant and its spread is much more pervasive than any other variant or aspect of this virus. Our highest monthly total during last winter surge was December and we had seven hundred ninety-six cases last December. We've had eight hundred and four cases in the last seven days. So stark numbers, very surprise, surprising and challenging. From a town staff level, we're experiencing, obviously, like so many others, direct impact. We've increased our testing program for staff, close contacts. That's all benefited through the American Rescue Plan Act funding the board set aside for employee testing program. And we've partnered with the Shrewsbury Public Schools in acquiring tests for the test and stay program for employees. We continue to report cases and vaccination data every Friday. We have changed our operating status to be open to the public by appointment only effective this Monday. Our goal is to remain in that setting as short as possible, but be able to continue to provide operations for each and every department. Members of the board know, and certainly the public is familiar. We have several departments with only or as little as three people in them. So we've divided staff into A and B groups and are trying to minimize the opportunity for the virus to spread and impact an entire department not able to function. There haven't been any reports of new deaths, which is wonderful, given the large number of positive cases. We'll continue to keep the port apprised of that. You can see graphically, obviously, that represents you know, you can feel that through through this graphic. It's very ironic how last year's winter surge has become a little aspect of a wave on this graphic on this chart. And you know, this year is completely dwarfing that. So obviously, as we look at the weekly case counts, the positivity rate and the average two-week posit, the the two-week positivity rate and the average daily rate, we continue to see those numbers increase to unprecedented levels of for the town of Shrewsbury. Continue to see great progress with vaccines. Hopefully, that mitigates the impact of the virus itself on individuals. Almost a thousand additional individuals received their first dose and a similar number are now considered fully vaccinated with that number increasing to seventy-seven percent of the total eligible population. And we're happy to be able to report booster data that thirty-seven percent of those eligible for a booster have received thus far, which have been reported. So wide variety of individuals are now eligible for a booster, including those between, you know, twelve, ages twelve and older. So contact your healthcare provider if you have any questions with regards to that. Many opportunities will continue to publish if the town sponsors any clinics related there, too. There's just a little bit more information behind the the data with regards to the positive cases on the bottom and the vaccination data there across the top. So I'm happy to answer any other questions that the board may have or any questions that the board may have. I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Any questions or comments, colleagues? Let's see. Any? Thanks, Mr. Mizikar. So at this point, I'll go to the next item on the agenda. Meetings, we have another meeting. It's part of a series of meetings that we've been doing with various departments. Before today, we have met with the police department, the fire department, both Chief Bona and Anderson came in and spoke with us, as well as the school department came in as well. And this evening, we have with us the Council on Aging Director, Holly Luke, who will be providing a departmental update. So at this point, I'd like to welcome her to present.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to kind of showcase what COA has been working very diligently on for the past year. So I just want to try to get this, make sure I'm trying to do it right. And of course, let's see what we got here. Can anybody see my screen right now?
Not yet.
Not yet. Okay, hold on one second.
Well, if it's easier to, I could just share my screen. If you're unable to get that up, I'm happy to do that if you just let me know.
I I think I have it right here, Kevin.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. Perfect.
Everybody can see this now? Okay, fantastic. So I know that everybody had an opportunity, or I say everybody, but the Board of Selectmen had an opportunity to see the slides before presenting here. So please stop me if I end up going too fast. I'm not going to read it word for word, but I will go through it and we'll go from there. So the Council on Aging mission has stayed the same through the last few years to advocate for and develop programs and services that enhance the well-being and quality of life and to create a welcoming, secure, and inclusive community for the seniors. We have the full-time staff, myself, Cynthia Willis, who provides our transportation, Renee DiArgento, Art Reach Coordinator, Christine Moriarty, our office assistant. We have two part-time office assistants, Donna and Pat. And then we do, at the present moment, have six part-time van drivers, but we do have ten positions available. The Council on Aging Board, we do have a few members as of this year. Just quickly, I'll go over them. Shashi Menon, Board Chair, Virginia Leonard, Vice Chair, Betsy Zuwig, Louise Russell, Jean Campagnello, Judy Gunstein, and we have one more position to fill, which I'm eager to try to do that. So we have been working during COVID shutdown, as everybody knows. And we, I'm proud to say that the COA staff made roughly thirty-five hundred or more interactions with the population of Shrewsbury while we were working remotely. And we have the necessary data through the My Senior Center software that we have to back those things up. So if anybody wanted to know a little bit more specific, I could certainly get you that information. We did offer some virtual programming, but we quickly found that people really just liked to be one-to-one in person. So we tried to get a little creative with the things that we offered afterwards, in which you'll see through the slides that I'll be presenting. We were able to offer some COVID vaccinations and we were able to book three hundred and seventeen appointments. And we were able to do this through all of the staff, both full-time and part-time, and working really closely with the Public Health Department, as well as Kristen Los and the rest of the town manager's office. Through the whole time, we've been offering classes. And as you can see, these are the classes that we still currently offer. So we have a a series of different things where it is physical, mental, educational, and support programs. And I'm happy to say that even though we are under an abbreviated senior center hours right now, we're still open and still offering those exact programs that you see here on the screen. So as you can imagine, the transportation service, we we did stop for a few months in the beginning and due to COVID. And once we were able to come back during July, we started to see a little bit of a steady increase. And each 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 kind of quarter of the year, our transportation will go up and it will go down. So in the summer months, we'll find that it goes down sometimes, but we attribute that to people being gone on vacation. The same thing as the winter months, people are gone through the holidays, as well as visiting their families. And there were a lot of opportunities for people to utilize transportation services. I'm sure as the Board of Selectmen know, VIA is one of the new transportation models that is also offered in which a lot of the seniors utilize also. But you can see in this little graph here off to the side that we're in a steady increase, hopefully to get back to where we once were. So we've been working really hard on our marketing and I am in the process of putting together a marketing plan to eventually go with the new strategic plan that the town will be offering. And one of those is we transferred over to our senior edition, which went from a five-page newsletter is now to a sixteen-page color newsletter. We also have started doing cards. So by cards, I mean that if somebody has a birthday, anybody that's eighty or over, we send them a birthday card. If there is somebody that passes away, we send them a sympathy card. If somebody donates to us, we send him a thank you card. So we have all kinds of cards that go out just to let people know that you, we appreciate the things that they have done for us and what we want to continue to do for them. We also, and I just received them today, so we developed a door hanger. So I'm not, if if everybody's not kind of knowledgeable on how the the newsletter is set up. Each month, we put in a side section of resources. So what we did was we took that page or that section of resources and we put them into a front and back door hanger, which we will be mailing out, will be handing them out to our Meals on Wheels recipients, as well as our van drivers and outreach clients that may come into the senior center. Basically, it gives a little bit of a detail of, let's just say, Elder Services of Worcester. It says who they are, what they are, and their phone number, how to contact them. So there, like as I mentioned, there is front and back for different resources that we use on a daily basis that we thought that people would be able to better use at home and hang it from their door. So I'm happy to say that we received a lot of grants in two thousand twenty-one. One of them, as you can see, the nutrition grant that we received from Massachusetts Council on Aging, we were able to stock our refrigerator for our food sharing pantry, as well as we gave out some fifty microwaves to people and primarily those went to a lot of our Meals on Wheels clients. After we did a few surveys, finding out that a lot of our Meals on Wheels clients didn't have a way to heat up the food that they were receiving. So they were more than happy when we provided them a a microwave. So that was, that was really rewarding for our COA department. We also received the forty-five thousand dollars in Shared Winter Streets grants in which we were able to provide benches at some of our local schools, as well as the senior center. And we also donated some to the Housing Authority. With that Shared Winter Streets, we were also able to provide reflective winter vests, shovels, and salt. In the very beginning, we had both pet pet safe salt and regular salt. And we were able to give that out. And with a little bit of money that we had left over, just recently, we purchased some more and people have been coming to the senior center and grabbing those for free. And again, the the responses that we've gotten back has been overwhelming. So that's definitely been a rewarding grant. We also received forty thousand dollars in the taxi delivery grant, which we are currently utilizing even today, especially where, because of COVID, we have reduced our vans to one person per van trip. And so we, if somebody calls up, we are able to get them a ride to the doctor's office or to the market or wherever, using the Yellow Cab Taxi Service, as well as Safeway Luxury Transportation, which that particular transportation service allows us to take wheelchair clients to to and from wherever they need to go. We also applied for a five hundred dollar Mass DOT Helping Hands Mini Grant. And with that, we were able to order twelve thousand transportation forms in which we have distributed throughout the senior center Housing Authority, as well as the places that we put our senior edition newsletter throughout the town of Shrewsbury. Our annual formula grant for the seventy-nine seventy-nine thousand dollars, that is something that we have been receiving annually. We hope to continue to receive that and that assists with some of our salaries, as well as incidentals or software systems, miles reimbursement, and some of the activities that we do. What's nice about the formula grant is during COVID, EOA, Executive Office of Elder Affairs, decided that they were no longer going to put the restrictions on it that they once did. So if we don't spend that seventy-nine thousand dollars down, we could actually transfer it over to the following year. Or if we do spend it down, as I mentioned, there are no more restrictions to that. So we can actually spend it as 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 needed. Outreach Services, so our new outreach coordinator coordinator, Renee DiArgento, she started August second. She's been coming in and she has, as she's been crushing it, I have to say. She has brought in her past knowledge of the things that she did before and she's been bringing it into the senior center. And she's been focusing a lot on support groups, which I feel as though that has been one of the biggest necessities that we've needed, especially during these COVID times. And she now is full-time. She works thirty-seven and a half hours. And the goal for Renee's position is to, once we get through the better weather, is to have her out and about in the community a little bit more to be seen and then have her come back. And we try to, you know, make whatever programs that she brings back that much better. But she has been doing an amazing, amazing job, as well as, I'm proud to say that we also have had the opportunity to have an intern with us from Quincy Community Community College. He was with us for the last semester. He'll be with us this coming semester and he's helping us work on some intergenerational projects. So we're hoping that this is an opportunity that we can continue to have each year during the school year and be able to utilize their services and to grow ours. Our nutrition outreach has never stopped. So even from the very beginning of this crazy pandemic back in two thousand and twenty, we have not stopped doing outreach. We've been offering the Meals on Wheels. We've been offering the Grab and Go. We put together a Help Feed a Senior program very early on that really took took off fantastic. We raised thousands of dollars very quickly and we were able to offer free grab and go meals to Shrewsbury seniors. And we're hoping that if if the need should ever come, we'll be able to do that once again. We also, we also started a food sharing pantry out of the senior center. So it is supplemental for the Shrewsbury seniors, but emergency for police and fires. So no matter what age somebody might be in the town of Shrewsbury, if our emergency personnel find that somebody needs some meals, they have the opportunity to come into the senior center and grab what they need. And we work together to make sure that that food pantry stays full. So we've been working on special events and programs. And as you can imagine, So we've been working on special events and programs. And as you can imagine, with COVID, it's been a little bit hard. So you know, it's the little things that sometimes matter the most. So we've offered and in last year, we offered the Valentines for seniors, we delivered them out, we offered some St. Patrick's Day meals free to some of the Shrewsbury seniors. We did some Mother's Day giveaways and we had some outside organizations come and be part of that. We had a fantastic Eagle Scout that came and built us like seven raised garden beds. If you, if you didn't get a chance to see them this past spring and summer, I, I would invite you to come and look at them. They're absolutely amazing. And the people that came into the senior center, those that helped take care of it, were able to take things away from it. And even those that weren't able to, we were able to give some vegetables and flowers and things like that away. It was, it was, it was really beautiful. So we had a summer kickoff open house and one of the things behind the open house that I wanted to do was, I wanted to support everybody that supports what the Council on Aging and Senior Center does. So we reached out to various outside organizations like Riddier Rehab and Elder Services and everybody that we work with and to support everybody and get everybody under the same roof and really kind of just showcase what we all did. That was our first real, well, my first since being with Shrewsbury, our real event. And I feel as though it, it went exactly how I would have wanted it to. We had Wally from the Pawtucket Red Sox there, although it's not Pawtucket anymore, it's Woo Sox. So that, that was fantastic. And we're planning on doing something similar, just like that and keep supporting each other. Through the generosity of the board and our gift fund that we have, we were able to purchase some air conditioners to really help out the seniors who struggle at home with the summer heat. And we still have some of those available. So we're excited to be able to offer those with the gift fund that we have received through generous donations. We did a Shrewsbury bear hunt and that really helped us utilize really to try to get people out of their, out of their homes, off their couches and to try to do something fun. And we were trying to incorporate so the whole town could do it. And trying to teach people how to use their phone through the QR codes and things like that. And we had a lot of people from out of town do it. We had a lot of people with kids do it. And that was fun. So we look forward to doing that again next year. Our Veterans Day Grab and Go Lunch, I have to say, was probably the best, the most special event, I guess, in my heart that so far since I've been at the senior center. Just seeing the people that were so very, very grateful of, of just the time and effort that was given forth. And the amount of volunteers that stepped forward and just, you know, gave hours and hours of countless time of them for the day. It, it was, it was really nice to be a part of that. We did this year for the first time in the winter from a Holiday Lights tour. So we were able to use our van transportation for our COA vans and we took seniors out and we just took them on a ride to look at the holiday lights, because a lot of people forget that seniors, as, as you, as, you know, we're not even seniors, even myself. And as you, you know, driving in the nighttime, it's hard to drive. So they were very, very grateful that they had the opportunity to go out and see the Christmas lights and they got the, the hot chocolate that we gave them and things like that. And they were able to have laughs with their friends. So that was, that was really a nice program. With that, we did the blanket and gift card drive this year. Many went to the Shrewsbury Housing Authority. We offered some to our regular people that just show up, as well as the riders that come on our transportation every single day. As well as wreaths, we purchased wreaths just so people could, you know, take them home, put them on their doors, put them on the windows, wherever they wanted to be, just to offer some sort of, you know, holiday spirit. So one of the things that I was asked right before, while I was doing the presentation is what are my goals for FY23? Well, my main goal is to kind of crush FY23 as, as far as I feel like that the COA department and the volunteers crushed FY22. So my plan is to still go forward and apply for as many grants as we can and hopefully we still get them. What I would like to do is with the work that the other departments are doing, like particularly Parks and Recreation, where they have their Thursday nights, food trucks. You know, perhaps we can be open that Thursday night and offer a movie or some games or something inside that gets people inside the senior center and show them that, you know, we're, we're there and what we look like and what it is we do. I would also like to be open through the summer months, maybe a couple of Saturdays and offer like a pancake breakfast for grandparents to take their kids and grandkids to where they can have a morning, to kind of show them and hopefully, you know, be proud of the senior center that they belong to. This is the 23rd anniversary of the senior center and we unfortunately have not been able to have any kind of celebration for the past couple of years. So I'm hoping, what I, what I'm hoping that we can do is we'll take the year and as you can see, April 25th through 29th, that's the week after April vacation. And what I've started to ask departments is think about what can you bring to the town? And whether it is done at the senior center or for seniors or whatever it might be, it doesn't matter. But if we all kind of collectively get together and kind of celebrate, not only the, the senior center, but us as a whole, this is the week that we're planning on doing it. So I'm looking forward to coming up with some more creative ideas for that. And lastly, many months ago, back in March 2021, we were asked to put together a five-year staffing plan. And in order to make everything happen that I just mentioned, it would really be nice to see our staff kind of increase a little bit and become more full-time. And my goal is for, if I'm not at work tomorrow, somebody else knows how to do my job. Or if the transportation coordinator isn't at work tomorrow, somebody else can step in and get that work done. So nothing ever goes undone, unaccomplished. So those are my, those are my goals going forward for FY23. And then I'll just leave you with a few, few pictures from everything that we've done before. So with that, I don't know, I know I said a lot in a very short timeframe. So I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate everything that is done on a daily basis for our senior community. There's no doubt it's been a challenging time and to continue as much program as we can and to continue to make sure that we reach out to our community that may be aging in place and harder to get out. I think it's been absolutely vital for the community that has done so much for all of us. I'll turn it over to any colleagues with any questions or comments. I have some, but I'll wait off. Let me see if anyone else has them first. Any questions?
Mr. Samia, I just
Mrs. Cassavant, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Holly, and letting us know what's happening at the senior center. I so miss being able to come in and participate in events and things that are going on with our senior community. My question, I guess, is about the food pantry and you might have said it, but you did, you said a lot. I might have missed it. Where is the funding coming for, from, for the food pantry and how is the food replenished?
So some of the funding, so like for instance, we just had a recent Shrewsbury company that decided over the Christmas break that they were going to take donations for us. So they brought a lot of non-perishables to us. But we do within our gift fund through the Council on Aging Department, we do have some money set aside that we, we can replenish like the frozen meals that come through there. As a matter of fact, we just put in an order yesterday. So we still have some money left over from Feed a Senior. And we very often receive donations that if they're not specified where exactly they go, we're allowed to put them wherever we feel that the need to do so. So that allows us to keep the food sharing pantry up to date. And the question might come up, but there's two of us that are served states certified. So we are qualified to make sure that the food that is within the pantry is, is good enough to give out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Ms. Chairman, if I could.
Sure, Mr. DePaulo.
Holly, thank you for that presentation. You squeezed a lot in, in a, in a few minutes. I do want to congratulate you on all the work you've done, seeing you started right about the time COVID did and still managed to keep things going. So thank you very much for that and congratulations on being able to get quite frankly, anything done. And I, I think you've done a great job. I'd just like to follow up on the five-year staffing plan. Could you just briefly remind us which of those would be new positions or these aren't all current positions at this point, are they?
No. So they're not all current position. One of the new positions would have been the Assistant Director's position. And one of the revised position would be the Office Assistant slash Transportation Coordinator position.
Okay, so I guess I'm a little confused. So the, the Office Assistant, Transportation Assistant, we have a Transportation Coordinator, right?
Correct.
So we're, and maybe I'm not seeing it. Where is it on this list?
So it should be with the Office Assistant slash Transportation Coordinator.
Okay.
So it would be, it would be one, it would be kind of two positions split into, into one.
Okay. All right, thank you. And the other ones, the Outreach Coordinator, we have now, right?
Correct, yep.
And the Department Assistant, is that new? Assistant or is that changing roles?
So because of the, her JQ, her title was changed, but it's still the same.
Okay.
Still the same position.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Holly, if I may have one question. So mental health and wellbeing for our senior community, particularly for those that may have been homebound during this period, what have we done to meet those needs? Community-wide, I think we're not the only one out there that, that has seen a significant increase in, in this area. What have we done and what do we need to do, to do going forward? And how do we participate with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services as well? To what extent do we provide services to the senior community?
So that is, that's a very big question. And that is a question that it will continue to be answered because it is something that we do every single day. So when we were, let's just say, when we were in COVID and we were working remotely, we were making thousands of phone calls to people repeatedly and, and and taking notes on specific people with whatever conversation that we took out of there and then leaving notes and making sure we were offering follow-up. So that was one of them. So another one is we utilize, so I'm not allowed to know what, who is on Meals on Wheels, okay? But I am allowed to share flyers and for informational packets and things like that, that the, the Meals on Wheels volunteers and the nutrition staff will help get out with those meals, which is how we were able to give out, like for instance, the microwaves that we offered or the air conditioners. Or most recently, some of the rapid COVID tests that we were able to give to people that can't get out. So many times we offer it through either, we either just call them on their phones or we utilize the Meals on Wheels service, the, the, what happens. We have the Are You Okay program and that Are You Okay program really started kind of taking on more clients when we started doing phone calls during COVID. And some of them, if you will, have gone off the program because they don't, they no longer, we don't, we no longer feel as though they need any extra service, but they did during those times. But they're always in our software system. So we know who they are and how we get ahold of them. We also rely heavily on people kind of, you know, neighbors taking care of neighbors. So it's really one of those things where communication is key. Our triad system is, is really starting to build and that's starting to be more proactive, more positive. I'm still looking to grow that. I'm still looking to get more information from other towns to see what they do. So as far as what you asked, it is, that is an ongoing thing that just will never stop.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, great. Again, thank you for everything that you do on a daily basis. Thank you for everything that you do for the town or senior community and the report. It was a lot of information and done very concisely. So thank you. And happy new year.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about everything that we do over there. And I look forward to speaking with you all very soon. So have a good night.
Great, thank you. You too.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Next item on the agenda is under New Business to review with the request for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting from Ruth Anderson, Principal Assessor, for an article to create a Shrewsbury Tax Relief Fund. Is Anderson here?
I am.
Oh, great. Thank you. There you are. Welcome.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
So it's my understanding that the board has, is in receipt of a memo that I wrote at the request of Mr. DePaulo last month. And it's basically to plant a seed to kind of get the board thinking about town meeting and what I would like to see come down the road to help our seniors and disabled community with their tax burden. So no surprise to anybody here, the tax bills went out. And most of them saw a very significant jump. And my office has been inundated with calls and why and how did this happen? And I can't pay this bill and things like that. So I'm sure that's not really a surprise to everyone on this board because of the outreach and the research that you did prior to putting forward the override. You knew that this was going to hit some people hard. And unfortunately, you were right. So it's hitting some people really hard. So the memo is just to, like I said, plant a seed. What my long-term, big picture goal is to start a fund, which is allowed under Mass General Law, as a tax relief fund that is funded by donations, some fundraising things. It's totally separate from the budget. It is managed by a committee usually called the Tax Relief Committee. And on that committee would be myself as the assessor, the treasure collector, and then some other members from the community. We would develop an application, develop parameters, and then in general, the way it would work is all the money that we bring every, in every year, we would send out every year. So it's not a money-making thing. It's not an interest-bearing thing. We get $10,000 in donations. We get 10 applicants. Everybody gets a thousand bucks. So that's the first thing that I would like the board to consider. And then I'd also like to, my plan is to bring forth for town meeting to get support from the town to increase the parameters for our exemptions that we already offer. And this is something that I talked about at the classification hearing. And it's also part of my goals for the year and Mr. DePaulo and I have had many conversations about it. So there are provisions within the law where we can make things more generous to the community by say lowering the age requirement. So instead of being 65, maybe they could be 62. We can also raise the income and asset limits, which have not been done in Shrewsbury ever. So if you think for a moment, the income limit to qualify for one of our exemptions is $20,000. You can't make more than $20,000 and get this credit. It's antiquated. So there is provision in the law where we can change that. And then we can also change the amount of the credit. So the law says we have to offer, for instance, $1,000 for one of the exemptions called the Senior 41C. That's just where it is in the law. We can double that. We can go 50% more, 75% more, but we can go up to double, which would mean a $2,000 credit instead of one. So those are the kind of things that I would like just the board to be thinking about as we get closer to town meeting and the warrant timing. Just so that it's not a surprise and that it's somewhat familiar to, to you all when we get to that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. DePaolo, I know you've been working with Mrs. Anderson on this. Any further comments before we open it up?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, I've really enjoyed working with, with Ruth on this. Um, you remember, um, before, um, um, the override, um, I had been looking to see if there were things that we could do to help, to help the seniors, um, anticipating that, um, with the passage of the override, that there were going to be some people who were going to have problems. And, um, at the time, there weren't a lot of opportunities to, for it, and certainly not in the timeframe that we had. But, um, this thing, um, the, the program that, um, Ms. Anderson is talking about right now, um, is used by many communities, um, throughout the state. Um, your income per annum is might be different, but I think that's because of the uniqueness of the different communities. Um, but, um, it's something that I think can be implemented, um, fairly easily. Um, it's, it's, the contribution's voluntary, so there's no additional burden placed on anybody to do it. Um, so hopefully, we're going to be able to get that through, um, quickly. The state law defines this, what the makeup of the committee is. Um, so, um, everybody has the same members of the committees, a couple of people at large and, and a few town officials. Um, but the other things, um, um, that Ms. Anderson is talking about, I think do bear, um, need to be looked at. Um, because, um, as long as I've been on the board, none of these things have changed. Um, and quite honestly, I, I, one of them I didn't even know could be changed. Um, but I, I think that the town has to have a discussion about it and, um, seriously consider, um, making adjustments to try to help people who are truly being, um, um, just, you know, tax-wise priced out of the town. Um, lower-income people struggle at $500 increase to somebody making $20,000 is, is a lot more impactful than somebody making $80,000. So, um, I, I'm looking forward, um, to working, um, with Ms. Anderson more in the future, and I'm hoping, um, that, um, there will be something that can be brought to the board to put on this town meeting in May so that, um, hopefully, we get it passed so some people can start getting released, um, in the next, well, in this calendar year, actually, I believe. So, um, and there, there are some other things that maybe can be looked at that are a lot more complicated, but I think one thing at a time. Um, and I think we should do what we can to help people, um, if, if there were opportunities to do it. So, um, I, I, I thank, um, Ms. Anderson for the, uh, work she's done. I know she's familiar with this particular program because in the, in the previous town she was in, they actually had the program, um, so she knows how it works. So, um, anyways, um, thank you for, um, letting her present and, and let us discuss it. And, um, hopefully, we can have, uh, further conversation in the future.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the other members of the board, Mrs. Castlevan?
So I want to thank, um, both you, Mrs. An, Ms. Anderson and, and Selectman DePaolo, um, for continuing to look for ways to, uh, reduce the impact of increases in taxes on our residents who are struggling to pay them. I know that when we discussed putting an override on the ballot for last May, one of the things we talked about was there's a set of people that will vote for it regardless of the cost. There's a set of people that will be against it regardless of the cost. And then there's a set of people that will want to vote for it, but they can't because they seriously just cannot afford the increase. And then these are the people that now you're probably hearing from because the vote was a successful one in that the override passed. But that sets up a challenge for so many people in the community who are seeing such a significant increase in their tax bill, when you couple it with the override and the police station. And I know that we've spoken in a workshop last week about, you know, trying to better time out the types of things that we need to be asking the community for the impact on someone's tax bill. And, you know, it was an unavoidable situation. Last May, we looked at all of the options, and this was the only option we came up with. And we did what we could to use the federal dollars to reduce that burden on the taxpayer. But it still is a burden, and anything I think that we can do, um, to reduce that burden is going to be welcome. Um, even if it seems like a small amount, something is better than nothing. Um, the other thing that I'm really cognizant of is what I'm reading lately in the paper about West Borough. And I think it was North Borough where they're seeing a dramatic increase in the valuation of properties in town and that leading to an increase in property tax bills, regardless of the fact that there haven't been overrides or dead exclusions in that town that are contributing to that. And I think that we are far behind potentially in seeing something like that happen in Shrewsbury because the values of homes are really increasing dramatically. Um, there's such a demand and there's only so much supply. Um, I don't know if you could speak to that a little bit? And what you're seeing?
Sure. So the, uh, values in town for fiscal '23 are going to go up again. Because I did a quick, um, every assessor or most assessors round about the end of December, they, they pull a report that shows the ratio between that calendar year sales and your current assessments. So our fiscal '23 values will be based on properties that sold in calendar '21. So I did that. I looked at the fiscal '22 values, which are already up. You'll remember that they went up, single-family homes, but went up by 8%. The fiscal '22 values compared to the market in calendar '21, and I'm at about 84%. And the state will require that I be between 95 and 100. So I'm already 10% too low. So that is not saying, I am not saying that values are going to go up by 10%. I'm just saying that a really quick pull of the data is single-family homes are going to be assessed too low based on where they are now. So they're going to have to go up in '23. Now, Mr. Mizikar and I have had conversations where we don't vote on the values. We don't. That's just a, it's just a number that's based on the market. What's voted on is the spending. However, in general, a lot of the people that are calling my office are saying, my value's too high. You can't do this. It's not reflective of anything, thinking that we raised the values in order to meet the spending instead of the other way around. So a lot of what I'm doing these last few weeks is educating, getting information out on how things actually work. But the truth of the matter is, when I look at the market from '21 and where my values will be for '23, they're going to be higher than they are this year.
Thank you. And I, I think it's really very true that it's an education piece, and it's a mathematical formulation. And the numbers are the numbers, and it's not a reflection of trying to raise dollars, um, by inflating home values. Um, and I, I appreciate the time that you're taking to talk to residents to help them understand uh, exactly how tax rate and property value creates their tax bill.
Of course.
Any other questions? I actually have one conceptual question. Um, so in terms of the tax relief fund, does that have to be just through voluntary donations? Or could it be funded, and this is more of a question I don't know the answer to, and also towards Mr. Mizikar? If we have some ARPA funds that are unrestricted, would we be able to allocate or earmark, say, an initial dollar number? I don't know what the number would be, but for that first year or two, to have a stimulus payment, but, uh, mitigation payment for folks that are struggling? Could we use federal, if federal funds are allowed to be used, is there a limitation on the tax relief fund where those funds come from? Does it have to be, uh, from citizens or can it be from the town?
I'm going to look really quick. I actually have the law in front of me. You'll bear with me. I don't know if Mr. Mizikar has any comments on the ARPA funds and the use for that while I do some digging.
It's a few ways on my end, too, but, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's an opportunity to potentially use the ARPA funds if we can get them into the revenue loss category, um, which is the area of most flexibility. And so the test at that point would just be, um, in what Ruth is likely looking up, you know, can you use local tax dollars to seed a tax relief fund? So I, I think that's the real test. I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'm not sure if she'll be able to find it or not, but that's.
Yeah, and we don't need the answer tonight. It's just something thinking about as we talk about stimulus funds and an opportunity to help residents if we can, understanding that we have a lot of restrictions with the dollars. And I think it was 400 some on pages of regulations that Mr. Mizikar has to read through to see if there's been additional flexibility. But just thinking out loud here, is that an opportunity for us, too? So it's not a to-do for tonight is, but as you requested it this evening, it's also something maybe we could look into to, uh, as another possible source to give additional resources to help residents out.
So in general, in the law, it does state that the funds need to be donated, um, usually by residents, like a voluntary donation kind of thing. Um, Shrewsbury has the scholarship fund. You all see that in your tax bills where you can send an extra whatever amount of money. It could be that. Another community that I worked in did have an, an exempt organization that voluntarily provided a pilot, a payment in lieu of, um, whatever sum of money it was, it varied every year. And let's say it was $20,000. They would provide a check for $20,000, and then they would itemize how they would like to see that spent. Most of it went to this tax relief fund. Some went to COA or, you know, other organizations within the town. So that's also something that I'm hoping to do, um, is to petition those organizations and entities in Shrewsbury that don't currently get a tax bill, but they benefit from everything that this community has to offer, from our central location to our public safety services and all of that kind of thing, and they don't pay for that. So not necessarily something that's going to be equivalent to what a tax bill would be, but even if it's 10% of what their tax bill would be or 15% or something like that. And then if we can petition them and maybe get them on board, we can possibly expand it out to regular commercial entities and industrial. Yes, they're paying a lot of taxes, but they're also benefiting from being in this community. So there, there's a wide range of things that we can do. Mr. Mizikar would have to speak to the, whether we could use ARPA funds. I don't know if that falls within a donation.
And we can figure that over the next few months. Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? Again, appreciate bringing this forward. Appreciate, Mr. DePaolo, your effort. Um, given, as Mrs. Castlevan said, we had a lot of discussions and appreciate you following through and looking through opportunities to help, uh, our citizens, understanding that they have seen increases in their tax bills and, and it's, it's difficult for some. We want to work with those people as much as possible. Great. So thank you for coming. We look forward to ongoing these, this, ongoing discussions as we move forward through early part of the year.
Thank you very much for your time.
Great. Thank you. You too. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on the 409 South Street Local Initiative Program Application Letter of Support from Gray Star Development. Um, we had a couple of meetings in December where we were asked, or the original ones was, was a presentation from Gray Star Development East to talk about a prospective, uh, 196-unit senior 55-plus living facility in town. Approximately, uh, 147 units would be market rate, 25% of 49 would be affordable rate units. And the project is proposed on undeveloped land consisting of 14.7 acres, uh, located at 409 South Street. And Gray Star came back on December 21st. We asked for additional time, and then we met a week ago to talk about this further. So what's, what we're being asked to do is to act on a letter of support and the program application itself. And there is a recent draft of the letter in our drive for us to take a look at that had been evolving, I think, through the day, based on information and advice from outside counsel. And at this point, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Los for her comment.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Samia, and thank you to the board. Um, also just like to acknowledge that Gray Star Development is on the line. If you have any questions for them this evening, uh, I'll let Mr. Samia, um, evolve that as, as needed. Um, in working with the board over the past few weeks and understanding your thoughts and processes, um, we have, um, looked at the LIP application and our letter of support a little bit more in detail and provided you all with the draft thereof. I think the main concern that we heard was that, um, there was not a development agreement, uh, part and parcel to the, uh, LIP application. And there has been further discussion of how to ensure that the Board of Selectmen would be able to negotiate into, uh, development agreement with Gray Star and execute that agreement, uh, in advance of Gray Star applying for a comprehensive permit with the Zoning Board of Appeals for this affordable housing project. So you'll see in both the LIP application under item 2.1, Community Support, Letter of Support from Municipality, we do reference, uh, a development agreement, uh, in that portion as well as, uh, development agreement in your letter of support to DHCD, which is a requirement of the LIP application. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Samia for, um, any commentary or questions moving forward.
So we had an original letter that was presented to us a few weeks ago, and then we subsequently have revised that letter to, as Mrs. Los was talking about, to address the additional requirement of a comprehensive development agreement as part of our approval. That is what the draft of the letter is now, um, in front of us, that the letter of support does mention our support, but also, uh, talks about tying it to the comprehensive development agreement. And if it's not executed, then the support would be rescinded. That's consistent with the discussion we had last week at the workshop, understanding that not having the level of detail in the LIP application itself, um, but also wanted to work with the developer, given their accelerated timeline. We thought that this was a balance to provide flexibility and accommodate the needs of the developer, but at the same time, protect our rights going forward, fully expecting to work collaboratively with the developer, given the conversations that we've had, but also making sure that, given the regulations as we understand them, that, um, we're not subsequently as well minimized in terms of opportunities as we move forward through the negotiations. So that is where we're at. Um, we have a draft letter in there. Mrs. Los, I didn't know if we wanted to, just any interaction with the developer because we have the letter in front of us. And, and while I believe it's reflective of the conversations the board has had, I didn't know if we've had any discussions with the developer. I recognized earlier that Developers Council, I think, was on, um, i- if there are any thoughts. Because if we go ahead and approve this, and if they have any concerns about the ability to do the application, then it'd be helpful maybe to know that now, uh, before we take action.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Um, I did have conversations this afternoon with, um, Gray Star's team, and they did have slight concern over incorporating the development agreement as a condition of the LIP, uh, as they feel that DHCD, uh, would not want to issue that, uh, project eligibility letter to a conditional application. Uh, we did run this by Town Council, Stephen Madouse, and he, um, does not see an issue with taking out the development agreement from the LIP application, but he also doesn't see an issue with keeping it in as, um, our letter of support references as well. So, uh, I did send that an email to the board. It did come through late in the day, and I know that you were on an interview at 6:00 PM this evening. So your time has been, um, quite busy this evening. So happy to answer any questions related to that. And also, Mr. Samia, if you wanted to hear from, uh, Gray Star's council, I'm sure you, you or the board members could ask for that as well.
So Kristen, just a clarification, I did not see that last email, but just to, to make sure I understand that would keep the letter as written, the letter of support, but pull it out of the application itself? Is, is that what I'm hearing? So keep.
My understanding is that Gray Star wishes for them both to be pulled out, but they could clarify for us further.
Miss, Gray Star's council on or one of the business representatives, if they could give us.
I, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay.
My, we appreciate very much the time that the town has put into this request, um, about our LIP application. And we understand completely that the development agreement is now the priority and needs to be worked through, uh, um, with, with great focus on the part of both the developer and the town. But I was concerned that a conditional LIP application might be confusing for DHCD, and I'm not sure how DHCD would respond. So what I asked was whether the board could vote tonight to approve, to issue a letter, to write, to draft a letter or to sign a letter and to sign the LIP application. To issue a letter, to write, to draft a letter or to sign a letter and to sign the lift application with no reference to the development agreement in them as a condition to the approval. The application could include. An attached development agreement. Both would be undated, held by Town Council and escrow. Until such time as there is a development agreement, and then they could come out from Town Council and they could be filed. So effectively, it's contemplating that we get to the end of that process with it. With an actual development agreement, but um the 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 board is signing the letter and signing the uh application or authorizing.
So thank you. Two quick questions. So the first question is is. Like we do. And. What I do. At work is that if we have a regulatory issue, we'll go on a no names basis, whether it's to the Securities and Exchange Commission or another regulatory agency when we have a question. Were concerned about confusion or interpretation. Is there any way we could go to DHCD and ask that? Hey, this is what this is going to say. This is what it means. Do you have an issue with it? So we could get that answer upfront rather than speculate?
We can try. They are very short staffed right now, and I I'm not sure about. The timing of being able to get someone to focus on this. And I guess my. My position would be if. If the concept of doing this undated um in escrow is not something that the board would like to pursue. We'd rather have the signed application as presented in your materials this evening, and we will do our best to work with you.
So thank you. And then the second question, though, if we're voting to. Sign an undated letter of support, an application to be placed in escrow until we have the comprehensive development agreement. That doesn't know. What does that get raised on? Is that comfort that it's been approved subject to? But you're not going to file anything at that point, so it doesn't.
Town Town Council would hold this, but it gives us comfort for. Putting the uh energy into the development agreement that the selectmen are on board. Once there's a development.
So originally, as part of this was. To accommodate timing, given the concern or the sense of urgency that this needed to be by calendar year end or some short period after that. If there's a willingness, I mean, it it's obvious that we're trying to get. Give that balance of having that comprehensive development agreement under understanding the standard. Under the law and ability to make change if you have a license application, but not a development agreement. I- if. We go forward and immediately say, hey, let's let's negotiate the comprehensive development agreement. Isn't that a show of good faith that we're trying to do that as well? Because that's. Where you're getting. I mean, if it's an escrow, it is still subject to an agreement. It's the same thing. It's the same condition. It's going to be subject to a definitive agreement. So was that a willingness that? If the the team starts negotiating and I mean. We're willing to do that. We've been working hard on the letter, but if there's a willingness to put in an escrow, it's an effect. Saying we'll wait till there's a development agreement and put it all together without the condition. Is there a willingness to do that? Because it's the same thing.
Well. If there's, I think what we're looking for is an actual vote of that is approval, subject to the development agreement. Um. Our preference would be if if the escrow arrangement is not uh. Something that is not interest of interest in the board this evening, that you do proceed signing the. Authorizing and then executing the documents that were prepared for you. And like I said, we will work with DHCD. Or do I best? If I I was initially concerned that it's it's a little bit confusing to have an application to condition on something that doesn't exist yet. And as an agency, I wasn't sure that they would. Um what their reaction would be.
So i- if I may, one last clarification question. So if we put it in escrow, it's signed, undated and not a. There there's still a condition subsequent to ask to happen. For it to be released. You can't do anything with DHCD at that point, right? You're still waiting. This is just you're okay.
Correct, and. Town Council would be authorized when there is a signed development agreement to date the. Date the application, date the letter, and. Then we can file it. But there it it's it's a step of having to come back and have it revoted to sign or execute something.
Yeah, but the comprehensive development agreement is still going to come back for a vote, right? So you're you're gonna, so you're still gonna have to come back to the board.
If I if I may step in, this is Chris Leggett.
Sure.
Gray Star. Yeah, um you know, and and I apologize that we we have not um, you know, fully gone through all I think of the the implications here of of um of of the different different approaches. We did receive the. Uh modified letter and application this afternoon. Um and we we've just been quickly trying to to address what we flagged as a concern, which was. Uh that there there may be a confusion point here in 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 the nuanced approach to the application. Um. You know, in 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 working through this discussion here, I think that, Mr. Samia, you raise a you raise a very important point for us um that, you know, if 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 we had more time, I think, to work through the implications of. Of the escrow uh process, we we probably would have. Halted on. Um it it is important for us to to have the lip application submitted and and start the process here. Um and and we do trust that, you know, being able to run a parallel path path and working through the development agreement. Um, you know, that that that's something that we're we're all clearly aligned on. I think that 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 intent is something that, uh, you know, we're we're very appreciative that we're all we're all in agreement on. So. Um I I if if I could, I I I would like to just propose that we stay the course here. Uh with with the proposed letter and the application that we have. Uh if that is agreeable to uh to the Board of Selectmen here for action. I think that that would allow us to continue with the with the plan that we have been um that we've been that we've been laying out in terms of our timeline and that that uh, you know, we appreciate your receptivity on.
So the proposed letter that as modified that you've with the concept of the. Ability or subject to the comprehensive development agreement? Okay.
Yes.
Or okay. So and then you'll talk to DHCD, DHCD to see. This gets your clock started. And as opposed to the, okay. So it's.
Exactly. Yep.
Any questions? So it's. As I understand it, um. It is the letter and the application, both of which are in the drive as. Probably from late this afternoon. Is that right, Mrs. Los? The the that was.
Yes, um Taylor sent it out about two forty five, and then it got in your drive. No changes to that version.
Okay. Is there? Are there any questions to that letter or any further tweaks? Changes? Comments?
Hey, did you miss Chairman?
Yes, Mr. DePaulo.
Everything, every time I think I understand this, um walking into a meeting, um something happens and I don't. Um. So. Did you just say the board would vote? On the letter and the lip application as they are in the drive this evening?
Correct. With the lan- with the language. Related to the comprehensive development agreement. And the the additional conditional language in it. Yes.
In- included.
Correct. It's as.
And then it would be held and then it would be held in escrow by Town Council?
No, no, what what the. As what was just presented is rather than go to the. Getting the the. Concern was being able to stick to the original timeline. If we place an escrow. Then it's not being submitted to anybody. So the. Request is is that let's stick to the original timeline, go with the language requested in our letter of support in the lip application and go with that. So they can stick true to the the timeline, the original timeline as much as possible. Do I have that correct? And then if they have issues with DHCD. We'll know soon enough.
Then they'll come back to us?
Yeah.
Right? Okay, so we're voting on what's in the drive.
Correct.
Right. Effectively, we are withdrawing the request that there be any changes based on an escrow concept.
Okay.
Okay. I, you know, I I just want to say again, I I have no issue with the project. I just want to make sure that. We're protected. That's all. Um so if that works for everybody, um at least as one member, um. I I can. I can vote in in support of that.
We did work with Town Council quite a bit on this, on the language that's in here. Um. You know, given the conversations that have happened to date, I would expect good faith negotiations on the comprehensive development agreement. That makes sense for both sides. That's also. In this letter of support, but this is just the first step, and then I think it. Gets us the appropriate uh path for the next step. To get that level of detail as the project is more fully developed, and then we can evaluate as well. I think that's the easiest way to say.
But thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Powers.
Yes, Tom Powers from Gray Star. Um with regard to the comprehensive development agreement, um I was curious if um. Uh Kristen Lass or Kevin Mizakar could just give us some um direction or thoughts in terms of um, you know, timing. You know, outside dates in terms of trying to, you know, meet and get together to try to um try to bring a. You know, try to get try to get to a framework and a decision in terms of, you know, what's going to be in the development agreement in terms of the draft that was originally submitted and. You know, when you think, you know, outside date would be that we might be able to get that to a conclusion.
I can take that, Chairman Samia.
Yeah, Mrs. Los, please.
Sure. So um, Mr. Powers, we've been um solely focused on getting this lip application before the board informed that they would be comfortable with. So we have not focused on that development agreement. Thus state, but we have been working with the water sewer department to understand those um upgrades that would be required. I believe I did have a conversation with you a few weeks ago about general term numbers. Um and I know we're we've been talking about a potential easement off of South Street um and any other transportation improvements. So I can't give a date um certain at this time, but we'd be happy to. Uh start working in earnest with you early next week on this.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board on this? We're. Are we comfortable moving forward, given the language that we have? I am. I am, given just to put in. Given the conversations I've had with council and. What I heard from the board during our workshop and the conversations at that time to address the. Concerns that we had, uh and I think they're embedded into the letter of support in the application. Mr. Chairman.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, that I am in.
No, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I I agree. I'm in support of the letter as drafted in the drive that we agreed on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Lebo. Thank you.
You know, I have to hear colleagues and particularly here in Selectmen, Paulo, who had raised some concerns about this that he's. Satisfied at this time, I'm I'm happy to move ahead, but I want to. I want to be really. Clear on what we're voting on because. Uh all I see in the drive, everything has the same timestamp on it. Two oh nine P M. As I see it. So I do see, I want to, it seems obvious, but. I want to be sure. There are two documents, one lip application, Gray Star, one eleven twenty twenty two version final. And then similarly, Shrewsbury B O S Lip Letter of Support, one eleven twenty two version final. That is what we're contemplating voting on. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The two PDFs in the drive, the lip application, Gray Star. Final and the Shrewsbury B O S Lip Letter of Support. Final. Those two PDFs are the documents that you'd be voting on this evening.
Thank you.
So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to make one. I just want to make sure I get this in proper form.
Great, thank you.
And let's see. I guess what I'm unclear on is exactly what my verb is going to be. I move that the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Lebo, sorry, one thing I I just asked who was the authorized. I think the way the letter is drafted, Mrs. Los, correct me if I'm wrong, it's. That authorizing the chairman to sign the letter, correct? So it's not the whole board. So that's just one.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and what is the what is the particular action? Is it filing? Is it signing? What are we doing with the? Application as opposed to the letter?
Mrs. Los.
We would be filing that application. Jointly with Gray Star.
Thank you. I move the.
To DHCD.
I move the Board of Selectmen. Uh jointly file the. Lip application for four oh nine South Street and authorize the chair to sign the letter of support. And and in both cases, these are the files marked, PDF files marked final in the drive with today's date on them.
Second. And we moved in second, and a roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Hi.
Ms. Mrs. Flynn.
Hi.
Mr. Samia, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Look forward to continuing to work together.
Thank you. Thanks for attending and thanks for the answering the questions this evening. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to authorize the chairman to sign the Estoppel Certificate and consent to refinancing of nine hundred Madison Place Shrewsbury, colleagues. There's a letter. From the current owner who's seeking to refinance the property. The town is. Um party to a regulatory agreement on the property, and there's a requirement under the regulatory agreement that requires our consent and the result of a refinancing. Um part of that is what we see in front of us is the Estoppel Certificate. The Estoppel Certificate has been reviewed by council in current form. It's similar to what had been signed. A few years ago when the property itself was originally sold. So the. Format has been reviewed by Town Council and has been signed off upon. Any questions? Now, is there a motion?
More approval.
Second.
I've been moving in second, and roll call vote is required. Mr. Lebo.
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan.
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo.
Hi.
Mrs. Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Sammy, I motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on proposed dates for actions relative to the May fourteenth, twenty twenty two, an annual town meeting. And there's a letter or a one pager in our drive about perspective dates moving forward. And Mr. Mizakar, there's also. Um. An option in here, right, about the annual meeting, whether it's Saturday, the fourteenth, or Monday, the sixteenth, there's a data point in this letter too, but I'll I'll hand it over to you if you wouldn't mind talking through this.
Sure. So the board will recall that town meeting voted to amend Article Two of the bylaws, which dictates the uh format in which town meeting occurs. Uh provided flexibility to the Board of Selectmen to be able to set the date for the annual town meeting beats uh at any point in May. After the annual town election and prior to the end of the month. So um we have made these recommendations based upon uh the the two dates shown. Uh Saturday, May fourteenth, which um as you'll recall, uh the prior to annual town meetings, one being in August and one being last May, where. We're held on Saturdays in a single day. Uh format uh and more traditionally, the uh prior bylaws provided that town meeting started the third Monday in May. So. Um we have the parameters set up for you to achieve uh required actions prior to any of those events. Um. But we did not want to presume which uh date the board preferred.
In terms of, Mr. Mizakar, in terms of actions evening, is it still a month to figure out the date? Okay, so this is just laying it out. Um and the expectation is that our. Actually, it's the February fifteenth meeting. We moved. The twenty second to the fifteenth, I think, is when we'd have to figure it out. I think the twenty second is. Then February vacation, which we brought in a week. So it'd be February fifteenth is when we set the date and time, and whether it's the fourteenth or sixteenth.
Uh thank you. Yes.
Fourteenth or sixteen, yeah. Any questions or comments on this? I don't think, no need to take action this evening of any initial thoughts in terms of, I think Saturdays have worked really well. And given the way the pandemic's gone, it gives us to give more flexibility. People time and be able to get it done in one day, but we have time to figure that out. Mrs. Cassavan.
Um, so I agree with what you just said, like I would rather. You know, take the time to see uh where we're headed with the pandemic as it's. Um kind of cycling through a surge right now. Personally, uh I'd rather be exposed. In a group setting once as opposed to multiple nights in a row. So I am heavily leaning toward a one day event on a Saturday at this point.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, we'll take this up. We in a few weeks from now, hopefully. The numbers will. Not still be ramping up, but we'll have time to figure that out. So we'll revisit, plan to revisit this on February fifteenth. And take a vote. So we'll revisit, plan to revisit this on February 15th and take a vote at that point. Okay. Thank you. Go to the next item on the agenda is to review and act on a request from Deepak Sharma, 19 Flint Park Drive, on the issuance of a proclamation for the Health for Humanity Yodhathon, organized by Hindu Swamiji Mar Sevak Singh, USA. January 15th, 2022 to January 30th, 2022, colleagues. This is a similar request as to, I think, three years ago, Ms. Ms. Lucia. And it's very similar with some small changes, but it's been tailored to, related to Shrewsbury as a set of, of broad sort of proclamation. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So this conforms to the policy now, the new policy? I guess I'm reading it off the agenda and not off, off a letter that was sent. But it looks like it's a national organization. That's why I was asking.
It's been, the proclamation is for the Shrewsbury community and only. It's tailored more towards just in town and health and wellbeing of those in town, right? Tailor, the proclamation has been revised to reflect that.
Okay. All right. I'm good. Thank you.
Any other questions? If none, is there a motion?
Move approval.
There's a second.
Second.
And we move in second. Roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I, motion passes unanimously. That's it for, under new business, now we'll go to correspondence. Under item 12, under general correspondence, it's an email dated December 17th, 2021, from Mark Sarah, Executive Director of Shrewsbury Media Connection, regarding SMC financial statements and 2021 operational updates. Some good news by Mr. Sarah. They received their 501(c)(3) designation as well. That's retroactive to 2018. They talked about the dollars that we're receiving from Selco. Cable continues to decrease the expected money from Selco under the franchise agreement. It will go down. And they're talking about other ways to raise additional funds. And continued thanks as well to Mr. Sarah, who and Ms. Poploski and his team that have been working really hard during the pandemic to make sure all of our meetings are covered. So noted. Next is an email dated December 20th, 21 from Deepak Sharma, 19 Flint Park Drive, regarding proclamation request for yoga awareness for, for the town of Shrewsbury. So noted. Next item is an email dated December 22nd, 2021, for Valerie Clemmie, Assistant Town Clerk, regarding online debit credit card payments to the clerk's office. And did see clarification that the town receives the same payment as the invoice and that the individuals paying by credit card or debit card will pay for the fees as they do for other expenses in town. So noted. Next item is an email dated December 22nd, 2021, from Samantha Shattuck, Auto Sport Inc., regarding Auto Sport Inc. car dealer's license. And Ms. Lucia responded back that, that had been approved by us. So noted. Email dated December 27th, 2021, from Stan Transiac, 562 South Street, regarding home values. Mr. Mizikar, if we could work together in responding to him to answer his email as well. He did ask about Westboro Home Values and, and if we could respond together on that. So noted. Next is a letter from December 28th, 2021, from Andrew Truman, Town Engineer, Engineering and Conservation Division Manager, regarding trailer trucks. I will respond, this is in direct response to a request from a resident about traffic flow. And I can respond back to her. She had a concern about traffic and the number of trucks that were on that. And the number of trucks, given the information from Mr. Truman, was below the 5% threshold, I believe. In order to get a truck, truck exclusion signed, you'd have to apply to DOT. So we'll respond to the resident that we have conducted the study and we'll share the results with her. So noted. Next item is letter dated January 5th, Douglas Larson, Geoscientic Consultants, regarding supplemental of immediate response action plan, 115 Northeast Cut Off, Worcester, Mass. Mass DEP, release tracking number 2-1121682. And it relates to PFAS in some of our wells. Mr. Mizikar, is that just more of a tracking? What is that in specific response to? I mean, we received it. And it relates to PFAS. How did that come about?
The, the letter itself?
Yeah. So what are they required to do? And I know we're running long here, but just the, is it just generally as part of PFAS concentrations in our water supply? And we're going out to Allegro that was, may or may not have contributed to that? Is that how that, how did that, how does that work?
Yeah. So this is, this is independent work that Mass DEP is doing outside of any municipality. And they have their own initiatives and they've been identified through that front. I, I don't know if it's because of DEP's knowledge of their operations or what tests they're using to determine who they reach out to, proximity or otherwise. So, but this is independent DEP, no town involvement.
Okay. Thank you very much. So noted. Next item is an email dated January 5th, 2022, from Gretchen Schultz Ellison and members of the Climate Resilience Central Mass, 24 Spring Street, regarding a climate action plan request. Mr. Mizikar, Mrs. Cassavan and I met with that group this afternoon to talk about a climate action plan. We have a lot of information that we'll be able to share with the board. We'll schedule a workshop coming up soon. This additional information that we received today that we'll also share with the board and can have a discussion about what we heard today as well as what other communities are doing. And, and so we look forward to those discussions. That's so noted. Mrs. Cassavan, did I have everything there? Pretty much did I summarize that correctly on that?
Yeah. Climate action. Uh, yeah. We had met with this small group of residents twice prior. And they had also met with General Manager of Selco, Chris Roy. And so today, the next logical step was to have Mr. Mizikar have an opportunity to meet with them as well. The good news is that we're doing, we're already taking some steps toward mitigating the effects of climate change and being more resilient. And I think that the residents were really glad to hear that. And it's also just a great opportunity for our board to work with a group of citizens on something that they find extremely important.
Thank you. Next item is an email dated January 5th, 2022, from Pete Delms, Animal Control Officer and Animal Health Inspector, regarding ACO Quarterly Report. So noted. I'll take the next items, 21 through 27. Correspondence, letters and emails received from residents regarding bill reuse. Again, as we talked about beginning of the meeting, we thank everyone that sent us correspondence, whether by email, by letter, or who attended our December 7th hearing. We heard, we heard the feedback. We've taken that feedback in our discussions with the developer. And discussions are ongoing and we look to share information soon, possibly as early as next meeting. So thank you again. So noted, items 21 to 27, 20, item 28, letter dated December 28th, 2021, from Attorney Patricia Gates-Mottman, Airborne and Whiting MLP, regarding Russell Industrial Park Commerce Road Application for Street Acceptance. So noted. Item 29, letter received, December 29th, 2021, from Attorney and Broderick St. Pierre, Law Office of St. Pierre and St. Pierre, regarding street acceptance, Oak Meadow Circle, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. So noted. And number 30, letter received, December 30th, 2021, from Steve Turnbull, regarding acceptance of Glen Neil Am is a Public Way at the Annual Town Meeting. So noted. Last four items on the agenda relate to ZVA decisions, all dated December 20th, 2021. So that is it on the agenda. There are not any questions or comments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. And we move in second. Roll call vote is required. Mr. LeBeau?
Aye.
Mrs. Cassavan?
Aye.
Mr. DePaulo?
Aye.
Mrs. Flynn?
Aye.
Mr. Samia, I, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. We'll see you on the 25th. Thank you very, very much. Have a good night.
All right.
Bye.
Night. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.